...
...
Good morning.
For the financials today, we have a couple appropriation transfers. Appropriation transfer request from the Joga County Board of DD to transfer funds to salaries from hospitalization and a supplemental appropriation request for water resources for year-end accounts. We have a cash transfer from the general fund to the computer improvement fund, a cash transfer from general fund to violence against women funds for the local grant match, and a cash transfer from general funds to victims of crime act for, again, the local grant match. We have a travel encumbrance for the engineers office, commissioners office, maintenance. We have a purchase order to Preston Ford for the vehicle purchase for the building department. Under vouchers, we have a payment of thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighty dollars to building technicians for the Joga County Board of DD roof project, a payment of twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars and thirty-three cents to Masonry Water Solutions for the Joga County Board of DD Burke repairs, a payment of twenty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty cents to telecommunications systems for the 911 location database upgrade, and a payment of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars to LGLJD for engineering and surveying services for water resources.
Commissioners's office is requesting board approval to execute resolution number sixteen dash one forty-nine itemizing the financials of the meeting number one of two thousand and sixteen.
Make that motion. Second. Aye.
I'm here. We have one of our newer employees take some time off. We didn't know about this upon hire. His supervisor approved it but wasn't quite sure about the formality of bringing it to session during his probationary period. So Jeff Thomas did take forty hours off between September twelve and the sixteenth, and that will extend his probationary period. As I said, we did know about this upon hire and his supervisor.
The Department on Aging is requesting board approval to pay leave by absence for Jeff Thomas transportation driver for forty hours for the period September twelve through September sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, which will extend his probationary period by the forty hours until May ninth, two thousand and seventeen.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Thank you.
Number five is me. I made a mistake. I'm a little bit dumb, so I'm just correcting the dollar amount. So the Office of Community Development is requesting board amend the motion from October twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, correcting the dollar amount to read a free next to the satisfaction of mortgage or chase fast or down payment assistance under grant BCO five oh three six one for property located at one sixty-five sixty-five in New Eldorado, Huntsville, as the mortgage remit amount of seven thousand three hundred and eighty dollars.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
How are you?
How are you?
I'm well.
Good.
EMPD grant.
Good way for me.
Oh, hi, Dale.
Well, you had to do the heavy work. Dale did the heavy work.
Obviously.
He carried the ball.
It was here. I was the one that carried it.
You're not on probation, are you? Go ahead, sir.
The annual EMPG grant fund needs a signature. That's a fifty percent matching fund paid to the emergency department. It is seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And what this does is this pays for half of the salaries and half of the benefits of the DED as it pays.
The Department of Emergency Services is requesting board approve not authorized the listed and forward to execute the grant application documents relating to the emergency management performance grant, EMPG, for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, and to further approve Director DLB wedge to execute where appropriate in the amount of seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars to pay fifty percent match of funds for a total of thirty and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
The next one is permanent emergency services basically does all the work for local emergency planning committee last year with seventy-five hundred dollars. Prior to that, it was fifteen thousand. We reduced it to seventy-five hundred this year because of the loss of Ken. Roger can go to school and he'll get a train next year. Some of the classes that Ken was doing, so we bumped it to ten thousand this year. And in the, in the motion is what we're getting in return, giving them in return.
Yeah. I always like to point out, you used to have a full-time employee doing that.
Yeah.
Any questions? The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board to pre-authorize the President of the Board to execute an agreement between the Department of Emergency Services under the Joga County Board of Commissioners and the Joga County Local Emergency Planning Committee, LEPC, to provide the following services to LEPC: administrative support, emergency response coordinator if elected by the Joga LEPC, permanent secretarial treasurer responsibilities, information coordinator if elected by the Joga LEPC, compliance, plan development, and exercising grant applications, training, and maintaining of all required chemical filing forms and records in the amount of ten thousand dollars for the year two thousand and seventeen.
I'll make that motion. Second.
She said they're out of the book. I said, do we have to put them back?
Just, you know, I have not read this in there.
There's a quiz.
Yeah, we. In front of you is a list of changes. One of the goals I wanted to get done this year is to update the plan. And we've incorporated a couple things into the plan. The chemical emergency response plan is now part of it as an annex, and so is the biological plan, and the use for Perry is part of that. So that's why it's so thick. But if you look at this, of course, you got the standard revision dates. They changed the four phases of emergency management now to five. They even added something called prevention. I don't understand why. I would think that would be intermediation. But anyways, we removed the Ledgemont Local School District, which is now under the Berkshire School District. We updated a, some of the information in the table of contents were wrong. We made sure we went back and cross-referenced it all and made sure it's all up to date. There were some major changes, some of the health department procedures. We changed what they call, oh, we added also hazard analysis mitigation, which was never in the basic plan, to show historically the hazards that we've had in the county as it pertains not only to natural, but also to man-made and technological emergencies that have happened over the last twenty-some years. Under the health department, we changed strategic national stockpile plan to counter measures plan, which is basically for pandemics. We changed a lot of dependencies under that. The new listing report of infectious diseases, authorities, chances of infectious diseases, quick guide for responders under mass retaliation, we have changed contact numbers, work area locations. We had to do a complete revision to the Northeast Ohio Region Medical Response Plan, which is a group of all the hospitals in Northeast Ohio and how they respond. We had to add a tab G for movements of patients. Under Annex M, we had to add an appendix for acronyms, definitions, and position numbers. We did add Annex P, which is the biological emergency response plan. You can see all the changes that have been made through that. We also added the chemical emergency response plan, which was accepted by the State of Ohio as of nine twenty, two thousand and sixteen, and the state voted on that and it's been accepted. We did keep the companion animal response annex.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah.
As you know, you guys selected a group. We did include the data as well, animal response team for the two animals that we have in the county.
It's a way to talk about those commissioners.
We think major, some things in the basic plan, there was some number changes at the State of Ohio which were changed. We didn't have the proper list of dependencies. On page three at the top, we added all those dependencies. We changed the emergency proclamation based on comments received from the Commissioners of Clark, thank you, Christie. We did add at the end of the basic plan, the natural act mitigation plan that I talked about, which is never part of that for man-made technological emergencies. Page four, going through real quickly, we changed the security Joga Park picture no longer, just here at the EOC. It's done by a secretarial person for the outside door, and of course, there's more guns in that place. We exacted it, so I don't think we need inside security. That was replaced. We changed the location, the roster board from inside the op, just outside the ops room to just inside the main door. Five phases again, and all the different portions. Page five, talked about most of those things going down. We updated the census information as part of Annex I. We updated all the care centers. Now that we only have two primary mega centers and then the secondary alternates, we changed those. We did a complete revision to the Annex J, which is damage assessment, because the State of Ohio has completely changed that over the years, and I recommend that Roger, that you do that every year from now on. So that's a complete revision for damage assessment. K one, grad plan has to be updated every year. We see no changes for next year. We did a major one for the drill. We had this year, and we didn't see any, we had no planning issues, no comments from the federal. As you know, we had a perfect exercise, so no changes there. We changed Roger or Kent to Roger. Oh, change him. Change the name.
Thank you, sir.
Page seven. We know under Annex P that the federal government did approve our plan. They received that back dated September ninth, two thousand and sixteen. Submission date for seventeen will be, I'll bring that to you in December or early January. Annex Q, which I talked about, although the EOP only has to be updated once every three years, the chemical emergency response plan must be updated every year because that's when the findings come in, and that's when we have a list of all the hazardous and extremely hazardous substance facilities, and that's when we make changes to that plan prior to October seventeenth, two thousand and sixteen. You'll see under Annex Q that the plan was accepted and changed, which was voted on October twelfth at the CIRF meeting, so that's in effect. And Annex S includes the minutes from the August tenth dangerous wild animal response team with acceptance of the annex, and we attached the new annex, and that's my report.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
On the front page.
Yep.
This change between Ledgemont Local.
Yep.
Which now became Berkshire.
Yep.
Well, the high school is no longer high school, and that was in that area. Is the, you know, the.
Ten Mile.
It's Ten Mile, yeah, the circle on the map. Was the elementary and middle boroughs road, is that in there?
No, it's outside, and none of the provisions of the plan, those children would stay there until such time they were picked up. If not, then they would be relocated to be with the high school or is it Berkshire High School?
I mean, 'cause I, that's the closest school facility to, for us.
If we had the bus on, you should go to Berkshire. That way, the kids that don't have transportation, all the buses are there at Berkshire. So we want to keep the families together, whether they're the elementary kids or, or the high school kids. The whole purpose is to get them farther away from the Ten Mile, and burn this public twenty mile. So we want to reunite the families, and if they're not picked up by a certain time, and I think we transfer them to Cardinal to wait, so.
What do they do with our students in the county that are at Auburn?
They relocate them to superintendent, to make sure they have the transportation out of those areas.
Back to our county.
Yeah. Well, we also.
Obviously, they're not going to go to normal.
We took in who? Perry and who else? We took in three or four.
Perry, Madison, they're all out.
Well, we get kids from Lake County coming to Chardon. I don't have all this on the top of my head, but we do through the superintendent schools. Jennifer Felker.
Felker.
Coordinates that with all the local school superintendents. So that's, that was part of this scenario we had during the drill, that she had to relocate those children. We had an issue with what Lake. One of the schools we had to rat out in the SOG because it wasn't correct anymore. I can't remember what it was, but during the dry run, we found a lot of problems with some of the school information which was corrupted.
Thank you.
That's my report.
How much of this is mandated by federal oversight?
Pretty much everything is. There's some stuff we put in there that's not, I mean, some annexes are not, but we pull them in there because that's the way they do business in the county. We didn't throw anything in there that we don't use. We didn't, we're not trying to create work for ourselves. Emergency Operations Plan is basically required by the State of Ohio, but it's based on NIMS, which is a federal thing. And in this, you'll see in the basic plan, all the different rules and regulations that are in the back as to state federal requirements. It's all listed in there. There's nothing that we're doing that we don't have to do. Unfortunately, we got a lot of them.
I'll bite my tongue. I'm going to bite my tongue.
I'm sorry.
Particularly happy about the fact that we got an animal, dangerous animal response team inherent, but we wouldn't be able to sleep at night if we didn't have that. A few other things that I saw there, so I would.
That one is a state department. That is not a federal.
That was.
Through the Department of.
So many wild dangerous animals. Seen a few of them down on the square tonight. Anyway, sorry. Very good report. Thank you.
The Department of Emergency Services is requesting the board approve next to the Joga County Emergency Operations Plan, problem, proclamation statement, and further approve and operate Director DLW to execute the proclamation statement and forward to two thousand and sixteen revision, which is National Incident Management, NIMS compliant, operating submission to the State of Ohio and all agencies.
I'll make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Oh, and I will be sending this out on CD. I would not be killing trees.
Pretty comprehensive report, though. It's very comprehensive. I was part of an accident over the weekend. I was traveling back from Indiana, and the accident happened in front of my wife and I. So we were the first at the scene with six other people who were getting out of cars to go help, and there was some pretty severe injuries involved and so on and so forth. I was the only one at the scene with a flashlight. Law enforcement showed up and they had a little pen light that didn't have any velocity whatsoever. So I just bought, at a local sporting goods store, a slider light that had a nice bright bar on it, and it lit up the entire scene. The sheriff or the fire department showed up, and they had these little clip-on lights that clip on their, their outside jackets, the old style, and they weren't very bright at all. And so it was interesting. Three ambulances, half dozen police, bunch of fire trucks, limited flashlights. I was kind of surprised by that.
It is surprising. I'll tell you, we always had those big mag lights in the car. Should be charged all the time, so we always had a light.
Didn't have any of those. They had them on the trucks, you know, they had the trucks, the lights were shining down on the scene, but they didn't have any right there.
Does he give a copy? You can get all.
Yeah, she, no, I can get one of them. She's going to show me so I don't have to be. Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Morning. Reason for today is just to get the final change order signed to the Clay Street project and then get the final disbursement from OWC on this project to max out our disbursement. Project came in under approximately twenty thousand eight hundred dollars based on just clients used in the field. So we always have that up or down this little bit, but so this came in under, and then that would be nine, ten would just be signing the grant. Mr. Reer sign it, maximizing our two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand with the final eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars change.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting board approve next to change order number one, final decreasing contract with Ryaniac paving incorporated to the asphalt surfacing of Clay Street, CH thirty-seven, A and B in Huntsville Township, in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars, thirty-five cents. The County Engineers' Office is requesting board approve now, right, the board number two, execute via house call of the works, pending disbursement request for certification number three, final, in order to release funds from the state portion of our OPW C grant for the asphalt resurfacing of Clay Street, CH thirty-seven, section A in Huntsville Township, in the amount of eight thousand seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll make those motions. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
Aye.
How we doing on their streets in the county?
I don't know. That usually goes right through the garage, but, you know, how many calls did you get? But we do keep a tally of it, so I don't know. Probably looking to.
Is that Frank that's trying to?
You could call Frank, contact him, you know, but most of them come in and they go directly to the maintenance, the maintenance department. They handle it from there. Something you can send Frank to, and I'll say something to him.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning.
Don't we come in this morning? This is just a notice to proceed for the courthouse basement rehab.
The maintenance department is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute a notice to proceed for Apex Construction and Management Company for this basement rehab project. Maintenance is requesting the board approve and authorize the President and the Board to execute a notice of commencement for Apex Construction and Management Company for this whole town basement rehab project.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
So that's going to be commencing on July?
Yes.
Time frame?
Ninety-six.
First of the year, there'll be new things that, while you're here, let me bring up, it's not on the agenda, but we've been talking about individually, about providing a space for community services action. I happen to be on the board for that organization. They do a lot of good work, and they're providing dollars to people of low-income status that have a need and so forth. And so there's some office space across from the veterans, the new remodel space that the veterans are now in, that we've been talking about providing to community services at a rental basis. There's some modifications necessary for it. I'm stepping out of the decision process on that because I'm on board, but I want to make sure that that's in the public record and the two commissioners weigh in, and if they have any thing to say about that. In addition to that, I'd like to ask, because there's going to be a little timeframe to get that remodeled over there for the organization, that we lend them the empty office in the back as long as.
In our offices next to me, where Colleen used to.
As long as there's no issues with that, I'd like to provide just two people, one and a half people who'll be in that office space. If we provide that to them for the month or so, it's going to take the modified space over there. I'd like to ask them to do that. I think I'm accusing myself of the decision process because I'm on board. So with that said, I'm bringing it up for, if it's okay, I'd like to ask for that.
Glenn, Glenn got a quote, I wasn't sure if I talked to all of you on this. Glenn got to do the modifications there. It was relatively high based on the fact that we're not going to get that much rental income because they're going to be renting, I think it's two hundred and four square feet. So he's going to do it with his internal staff, and that'll just take a little longer to do it.
We're going to do a wall somewhere there, right?
Correct. We're taking out, there's a two-inch wall, we're taking that out. The other wall, we're moving the kitchen, the sink cabinet from the window.
To an inside wall.
To an inside wall. So demo started, so we've got almost all the walls out there. Should finish that up today, all of them. Finish up our list of all the items coming, so I'm making this out of capital.
I'm not, I'm no expert, but it doesn't appear to be like, you know, a major construction job. Putting up a wall, moving the sink, and cutting a new doorway, right?
No, it's not a major construction. With us being up with the full staff and everything, so we've got a little bit more to do.
Anybody have any issues with, there's in the office back there on temporary basis? If not, thanks, Mike.
Can we have another one for? No. No, they were both taken.
The Department of Juvenile Court is requesting board approve now, authorize the President and the Board to execute the House of Public Services Juvenile Accountability Log Grant JABG two thousand and thirteen JB zero one four B two two six, third quarter, reversion report.
Make that motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spiller?
And just for full disclosure, this was actually signed yesterday. We're following up after the fact. There was a deadline on that. That was in the last meeting, there was some question as to whether that was a deadline, what these programs were, and so on and so forth. This JABG grant is a federally funded program, and I'm not putting in a federally programmed thing, it is doing good things for helping to keep the operating expenses down, the judges being pretty good from a responsibility standpoint with that, so. So that's already been in the works, we've now got to agree with it, so.
The Probation Report is requesting board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the fiscal year two thousand and seventeen DYS three claim grant amendment. Attachment A, page two, to adjust funds and attachment program overview.
Make the motion. Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
So we applied for our grant for the prosecutor's witness program in July, and it was approved, and so we're just, I'm asking that you sign it out for the people to process the grant.
The Prosecutor's Office is requesting the board approve and authorize the President and the Board to execute the victim of crime act of two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and seventeen grant award and acceptance forms for the Joga County Prosecutor Victim Witness Program, Act two thousand and seventeen, Voca four three five. Witness Program, grant two thousand seventeen local four three five five two two three one, in the amount of seventy thousand six hundred and sixty-nine dollars, sixty-six thousand two hundred and eight dollars federal local fund, sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars local county match and state victims advocacy act, SVAA, grant two thousand seventeen SVAA four three five five two two three six, in the amount of four thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars with no local match for the period October first, two thousand sixteen through September thirty, two thousand seventeen.
I'll make that motion, second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Flair?
Aye.
Commissioner Flair?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day. And this major Indians fan, uh, come up. I wore all the stuff, including these.
Yes.
Last time they won, so.
Oh.
It's, it's, it's a.
Did you shave the last time they won?
Uh, you know, I had a full yesterday, yeah, and I shaved some of it off, but no, I haven't shaved since I went to the first game until yesterday. And I screwed it Sunday night, thought about shaving it a little, so.
Cause you thought about shaving it?
Yeah, I'm, that's not my intention. And it's, we, we, it's, it's, they're, they're monsters, cats, trans, it's usually a big, a lot of support, the big city team. Look at that, I'm not seeing that.
No, I just, I'm not going to say anything about the Browns.
Oh, I didn't say the Browns. May imagine how that linebacker from, off the subject, that linebacker from the, probably Super Bowl Patriots on Sunday morning, you get up, you know, the Patriots on Monday morning, you get up and you're, not the Browns. Ouch. As you can see, I'm asking for some, maybe a specific amount of time, I do have no, and I'll be taking it, all of it or any of it, you know, I had something this year, I didn't get most of it, uh, two issues going on, I probably have some medical issues with my family that will require me to be away like tomorrow. Um, and I assume at some point in time, based on a little problem or a sick leave or whatever I need to do, so, um, and, uh, I have some stuff left going on, that's, of course, I might require my time away, so.
You got a backup plan, Jack, to me?
Me?
I said you have a backup plan, you have somebody to.
Oh, yeah, we, uh, I'm not, but, yeah, we have, oh, you know, Joanna and Kate, uh, Joanna's slowly learning my job and, uh, Jack Jackson's job there, and also Kate, uh, that's, imagine transit, for that transit, that I went through, so, um, my face is the floor today and they're tearing me out, there should be absolutely no, uh, no, we should, over on the face and whatever it takes to do that.
That scenario has nothing to do with the Indians game, right? Whether your face hits the floor.
No.
Just checking.
No.
How involved you are here.
People can be pretty emotional over the Indians, I can't figure it out. I'm a Cleveland sports fan, you know, spent a lot of years, I think you mentioned when you were born or the last time they won a championship.
Yeah, they won the World Series the year I was born, so I can always remember how long it's been since the.
I look at this, it's a once-in-a-like, might be a once-in-a-like type thing for a lot of people, it's very rare that a World Series comes along, like an NBA championship.
Well, if you lived in Chicago, it is.
Your Cubs fan.
Yeah.
Very much so.
Nineteen oh eight or something, that's only a hundred and eight years ago.
Yeah.
The county's department is requesting board approve up to eighty hours of unfeared personnel leave after Michael Casper during the period of November first, two thousand sixteen through March thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, for section six point one two of the Jod County Personal Policy Agency.
I'll make that motion, second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Flair?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike, thanks, Mike, good luck with that, yeah.
The only other thing I had was, um, I called up the press release that we used last time for the Florida mental health recovery services, um, to go ahead and send that out to the Maple Leaf and the news herald to see if they would, uh, is that a press release and then post it on the website with a cutoff date for applications of December second. Um, and then that way, if you wanted to move forward with, you know, looking at what you have, you know, doing one, and then, um, then you can get a little time to accept any other applications, um, because these would be for, to fill the unexpired terms of your two agencies, which is, one is through June of seventeen and the other one is fifteen of two thousand and eighteen, so that way, that is what, that is what I have, is the press release that's filed. And it does state in the bylaws that they do have to be a Jod County resident.
Now, if we've got an opportunity to interview any of the, of the three candidates we have, if you're comfortable with any of them to fill a spot. Um, we did receive a letter, I think each of you have received a letter from mental health board, and in this they indicate the, uh, various absences. Um, there's an individual that, that appears to have chronic, uh, situation, they're missing on a regular annual basis, missing a lot of meetings, it doesn't appear they want to be on the board, uh, I'd like to suggest to this board that we vacate that seat and and, uh, create a third vacancy. So, as we're going through the interview process, we don't have to have that discussion or decision today, but I'm going to throw that on the table, I'd be in favor of vacating that one seat and, um, since we're going through the posting process in any case, put a person on there that's more likely to show up and be responsible on the mental health board.
So, I didn't know if you wanted to put an ad, um, that would be an expense that we have, but we could send a press release that, um, if you, if they do, if they don't have a possible, it looks like, do you want to extend that date to December second or?
I think that that's plenty of time, between now and December, personally, I think a month is plenty of time for us to get as many applicants as we can get in and then take care of the situation.
As long as the people know about it, yeah.
As long as there's a notification that there, there are openings.
Yeah, probably.
And we'd be okay with paying for, uh, that ad, so we can get some good people to apply, so.
So, we wanted to add, then we would have to have a motion to advertise.
I'll move that we advertise for openings on that board.
Second.
Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Flair?
Aye.
And at any point in time, um, that we're comfortable with anybody who, like I said, we have three resumes right now, one of which we're going to exclude because they're not residents of the county, so we have two effectively, um, that are, at some point in time, comfortable with, uh, folks, we don't have to wait till the end of the posting process to start filling seats, but, um, you know, because of the board, I think the board's going to be two more times this year. Um, I may be wrong, they may only be one more time, but in any case, there are, there is critical business that are involved with, and so, we need to have a full board there making decisions, so. And, I guess that's it. Do we, do we know what the deadline is on the, do we have a deadline on the wake-up decision? Have we gotten any feedback on the public information request?
We have not gotten, we have not gotten response yet on our public information request. That's why we're simply asking for the documentation on how the board was originally set up and the actions that were taken to change the composition of the board over the years between when Milwaukee started and today, we have not heard back. And, you know, it kind of indicated, I think, in my initial, um, email to Ms. Palucci, that that's part of what I felt the board wanted to be able to see, or if you'd come to the decision on whether you're, how are you going to vote on this ratification or asking you to vote on it.
Well, that was a particular year that we, that I'm interested in, because that's when the significant change was made. It went from three commissioners and three individuals in our county to the current board makeup. And if this board never ratified that back then, um, that could call, come into play whether or not there's a valid set of bylaws that we have. And so I'm very interested in their response, because we don't have a record of this board ever ratifying that bylaws, so.
Well, I, I'll, I'll follow up, because it's been a couple of weeks now, I can't figure it out long enough. I would hope this is our expectation.
We are talking about. So, with that said, I don't know, I can't figure anything else.
I move to adjourn.